Good evening and thank you all for joining us tonight. My name is Lori Singleton. I'm President and CEO for Arizona Forward. And joining me is John Ford, who is the past Chair of the Board. And he'll be helping to moderate the session. But I just wanted to give some opening remarks and tell you a little bit about who Arizona Forward is, if you're not familiar with us. We are a 53-year-old, nonpartisan, nonprofit organization whose mission is to bring business and civic leaders together to promote efforts to improve the environmental sustainability and the economic vitality of our state. Our members include large corporations such as Intel, Wells Fargo, Honeywell, all three universities, the utilities, APS and SRP, large and small businesses, even some who are located right here in Tempe, such as Jones Studio, Standard Aero, ETC Group, and Logan Simpson Design. Additionally, an important component of our membership are our municipalities throughout the state who are members, including the city of Tempe, who I looked it up today, has been a member of Arizona Forward for 30 years. We're really proud of our partnership with the city on many issues and projects. And I think our most recognized project was the establishment of the original Rio Solado Development District, which led to the Tempe Town Lake and what we know today as Reimagined. The city of Tempe engages with Arizona Forward on regional and statewide work. Most recently, we were working with the city and advocating for federal and advocating with the federal delegation for infrastructure funding, as well as working on resiliency issues in Maricopa County. Today, Arizona Forward's strategic focus is on climate action, particularly as it relates to air quality, extreme heat, water, clean transportation, clean jobs, and a circular economy. Kudos to the city of Tempe for being the first Valley city to adopt a climate action plan and for their deep community engagement on this topic. So with that, I would like to have our candidates introduce themselves and give a less than three-minute introduction and talk about your commitment to climate. So with that, how about I start with John Skelton, since you're the top of my screen?
Lori, Lori, I'm going to make an audible right now. I apologize, and I don't mean to interrupt the flow of things, John. I apologize about that. But Berdeta got us a message that she needed to leave early. So I'm going to ask for special dispensation and ask that Berdeta go first. And then hopefully, we can even squeeze in one quick question and answer for Berdeta, and then we'll get back to the regular program. Is that okay? By the way, Berdeta is going to another governing meeting. So we want to make sure she can get to that. So Berdeta, could you start us off, please?
Yes, thank you. Hello, everyone. My name is Berdeta Hodge. I'm running, I am running for Tempe City Council. I am currently on the Tempe Union High School Governing Board. I want to start off by saying thank you for attending the forum today. Thank you, Arizona Forward, for bringing us all together tonight. As you know, I currently serve on the Governing Board of Tempe Union High School District. Unfortunately, I cannot stay for tonight's forum because I have a previous scheduled board meeting at this time. But I must, you know, you must attend those because I am committed to my Tempe city, my teachers, my administration, and my parents, and most importantly, my students. Even though I cannot stay, I would like more than happy to answer any and all the questions that are asked at the forum tonight. Arizona Forward's mission is to create an economical, vibrant, and sustainable Arizona, which I actually totally identify with. I believe that our city cannot make meaningful and lasting economical progress if elected officials ignore our policies on air and water, which is very precious. So let's keep expanding the Tempe Climate Action Plan, build forward on the framework, and let's promote the planning of urban gardens and made shade trees, more development. And finally, let's create more pedestrian-friendly Tempe to minimize our residents on depending on cars. So I just thank you so much, and I hope to honor, I hope to be honored to receive your vote.
Thank you, Berdeta, and thank you to the other candidates for letting us shift things around a little bit for Berdeta. We appreciate that. And John, you will be next, I promise. So what we did, Berdeta, as an organization, is we looked at both the existing action plan and the upcoming plan, the draft plan. And we used that to fashion a bunch of questions, which again, you said you would answer all those as time permits after the meeting. But right now, live, I want to ask you sort of a double question, if you will. You chose the categories, so we're going to work off of that, which is talking about the youth audience, the youth segment, the youth population, and transportation. And I'm going to throw in a little energy double question for you, so you get a chance to work on both of these. So first question, how will you work with youth and students to ensure that they have affordable options to move around the city as they travel to school, their jobs, or for leisure activities? And we'll say too, we've got some info on this question from the community that, you know, there's this issue of residents versus non-residents. You've got people who learn in Tempe but don't live in Tempe, and they don't actually get to access all the same things as residents do. So that's, that's your, your first question, if you would.
Okay, thank you for that question. As you said before, if they live in the city of Tempe and they're under the age of 18, they do get free transit through the buses and the light rail. What I'm working for, and I'm already continuing to work in for that, is we do have a lot of students that are out of district. And what I want to do is we're partnering with the, with the Transits of Phoenix and also with our school district to make sure that our outer, outer district students get that same transportation rights that the ones inside Tempe do. Because a lot of those students who work, go to school in our district, they work near the schools. So they are, and they work near our schools. I don't think that it's, I think it should be equitable when it comes down to all of our students learning how to work, actually use public transportation. It helps out. And also, not only does it, it helps with the environment, it also helps with accidents. Because a lot of our students at lunchtime, that's when a lot of the accidents happen, when they're trying to rush off campus for lunch. And that's something, as I would work with schools, to make sure that we have more closed campuses, unless you're a senior and you're leaving, to stay on campus and utilize the public transportation more and give incentives to it. Because a lot of our schools already are giving incentives to kids who ride buses. And I just want to continue that out and move that in within all of our students within our district. Even if you live, or you work, or you play in our district, if you're under the age of 18, I think that would be great.
Thank you, Berdeta. I'm going to throw one more question at you before you have to go. And it's still a youth-focused question. What ideas do you have about how youth can play a role in creating, creating clean energy jobs of the future?
You know what? That is a great question, because it's not how they're doing it. They already are doing it. In our schools, we are, they come up, we have sustainability clubs in all of our high schools. And they come up, if you were to take the time to listen to some of the ideals and companies they have already formed for, for our next generation and make sure that we have clean energy, clean water, it would astonish you, what we need to do as a community is build partnerships. Like, if these kids are ready and they're already creating this, this company, we need to have, I need to bring the business community in so they can start listening to it and hearing what these, our students are saying. Because they're, they're thinking about their future, even when we don't believe they're thinking about their future. They're already planning it. We have so many kids right now. We have one school district, it's a one, one school that's already, they have a tree planting company that they have, and have, they have invested in. And they're actually working it. So I think that building, bringing the business community to our students and having them work together, and even maybe having internships and starting jobs with them so they can go into this, go into this after high school and college, it would be phenomenal. So I'm going to work with our business community and our schools to make sure our kids have, can move on to the next generation and make sure that they have what they need to continue this process. And sustainability is strong in, in, in the kids under 18. So I thank them for it.
Berdeta, thank you, and thank you for making the time before you had to leave. We really appreciate it. And I'm going to turn it back to Lori, and we'll go to John, I think, right, Lori?
I think, yes, I think he's first. So John, would you like to introduce yourself and give some opening comments? Thank you, Berdeta.
Yeah, thank you, Lori. Thank you, John. I'm going to start off first by saying that I am not in any way, shape, or form a climate change expert or policy expert when it comes to this type of situation. I think I consider myself the more average Tempean who's like, hey, the world's getting hotter. We do need to do something about Tempe, about climate change. As a whole, what can I do as an individual? Or what can I do as an elected official to at least get the ball rolling in the right direction? And I think the city's made some great strides with the Climate Action Plan. And I think the biggest step in that is making it, starting the process and getting some of these initiatives started and having the leadership in place and making sure that cities, the city of Tempe is doing what it can on a local level when we know we're trying to address a global, a global issue more than anything. I'm also the only candidate with a young son, so he's actually eight today. I'm missing his birthday party, but he is the future. So in 20 years, is this city going to be viable? Are we going to have enough water in 20 years for him? Are we going to have enough clean energy for him to continue to live the lifestyle he has without having to reduce in certain ways? And a lot of those serious questions are, I think, what the average Tempean and what the average, really, American and world citizen thinks. But if I were to get elected, I would definitely dig in and I would learn as much as I can regarding policy and what we can do on a local level to try to change the world. So thank you.
Thank you, John. How about we go next to Casey?
Thank you so much. Thank you, Arizona Forward, for hosting tonight's discussion. I'm Casey Claus. I'm an attorney, a high-sticks negotiator, and a climate advocate. And I'm proud to be running for Tempe City Council. I'm running because our city faces significant challenges. The housing affordability crisis is real and is deeply connected to homelessness. The climate crisis is here and requires local commitment and action. And as we recover, we cannot ignore the impacts of the pandemic on our local community. All Tempeans deserve to live in healthy, sustainable communities. We need to build a future where kids, college students, working families, and seniors can all grow and thrive. It will take leadership to address our challenges and leaders with a real commitment to equity and sustainable and sustainability. I've spent nearly all my life in Tempe. When my family lost our home, it was Tempe neighbors and friends who helped us find a landlord to take a chance on a mom and her two girls. I know many people aren't that lucky, and that is why I'm so passionate about building housing that is affordable for Tempe's working families. I have built my legal career and community advocacy around addressing the climate challenge. I'm an attorney for a green trucking company developing electric semi-trucks. And for fun, I organize to hold our elected officials accountable to taking action on the climate crisis. I know that to tackle the enormity of the climate challenge, we'll need all hands on deck, business, local government, and the community. And I've worked with all three. I'm ready to lead. In my professional work, I've negotiated multi-year, multimillion-dollar contracts on behalf of my clients, and I'm ready to use the skills I've built to make sure Tempeans get what they need at City Hall. I'm a policy wonk who knows that we need to build policies, not just around the problem, but around the people we serve. I love Tempe. I know that together, we can build a future for Tempe that we're proud of.
Thank, thank you, Casey. Next, how about we go to Arlene?
Good evening. Thank you, Lori. Thank you, John. Thank you, Arizona Forward, for inviting us here tonight for some very important discussions. I'm a 47-year resident of Tempe with more than four decades of Tempe leadership experience within our community. I've served on council, and I want to serve my community by applying the leadership experience that I've gained in Tempe for Tempe. I think our discussion tonight is very important because it impacts all of us on a daily basis. And perhaps further, it impacts our collective futures. It's imperative that we work together to develop new innovative solutions to address any of the root causes of climate change. And Tempe has a great start. I was on council when we approved the first Climate Action Plan, and I'm anxious to see the update. And I think we need to follow the plan and work with the content experts. Thank you.
Thank you, Arlene. How about next we go to Jennifer?
Hello. Good evening, and thank you, Arizona Forward, for, for hosting this. I appreciate it. And we can never, never get enough of debates. So we'll have fun tonight. Anyway, so I, first, I learned from a young age that I liked helping people. I delivered Meals on Wheels when I was seven years old with my mother and learned right away that I liked seeing people smile and be happy when I could help them. I also have my bachelor's in social work, my master's in social work, and, and my master's actually from ASU, which I'm very proud of. I was, I'm the only incumbent running for this reelection as I was voted in four years ago. I spent 29 years working at the city of Tempe before I retired and ran for office. I also am proud to have annexed 17 acres of the county island and have more to go. And I want to promote a lot of sustainable practices in the new construction. I also was a facilities manager for the city of Tempe, and I implemented hundreds of thousands of sustainability initiatives that both saved the city money and saved our energy. We did, we even did recycled carpet, LED lights, more efficient ACs, and just to name a few. So I'm really proud of that accomplishment. I'm also on the Sustainability and Livable Communities Council Committee with Councilmember QB, and we have been doing a lot of things on that committee. We're working on green stormwater. We're working on mobility and clean transportation. And we're updating the Climate Action Plan, and that will be going to council in March. So we're going to be getting a lot of feedback from, from folks, and we have been working on that for about seven months now. I'm also envision train certification, which is, was developed out of Harvard. And it's based on how construction must come on budget, but it also has to be sustainable. It is a tool developed to evaluate sustainability of civil infrastructure. It is a holistic approach that includes the design, planning, construction, and maintenance. It's basically the triple bottom line: people, planet, and profit. Thank you, and I would appreciate your vote in a week. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. I think next we have Harper.
Hi, Harper Lyons here. We've all had a few of these forums so far, so I'm going to spare everyone the grandiose introduction, but I'll just tell you what does qualify me and why I'm running. I serve on the Tempe Arts and Culture Commission. I've worked in corporate social responsibility for the last three years, moving on four. So I have a professional stake in this and a personal stake in this as well. Professionally, I actually have a history with Arizona Forward as well in my previous role in University of Phoenix. I was a part of the decision-making process and the charitable contributions in our partnership with Arizona Forward, which I very much appreciated because it's close to my heart as a longtime Tempe resident. I'm actually really excited about this discussion because it dives into the future planning, which is what we should be talking about. I've actually read the general city plan through, I thought that was a way to prepare to actually be knowledgeable on the topics we're discussing and the future planning. And I've reviewed the cap. So I feel really excited about this conversation because we're going to get into the nitty-gritty and actually dive deeper into not only our perspectives, but our vision and how that aligns with the city plan. So I'm Harper Lyons. I'm running for Tempe City Council, and I hope through these conversations to earn your vote.
All right, thank you. Well, I think we've got everybody. So it's time for me to turn the mic back to John, who will moderate the rest of the session. And I am going to go off-screen and do my official bell ringing when your three-minute answers are up. So thank you all for participating with us tonight.
I want to thank the audience again. I want to thank Lori, and I want to thank you as candidates for, for letting us do that little thing at the beginning with Berdeta. That was really helpful. I know that the audience appreciates that. I know that it makes things a little awkward, but I appreciate the flexibility in that. Real quickly, I just want to set the stage a little bit. The feedback we got leading up to this forum was that the previous forums were a little more succinct and didn't allow for you guys to get into dialogue, to get into dialogue with the audience and with each other. So I invite you to do that tonight. Tonight, what we're trying to do is allow you more expansive time to answer questions and really to give people a sense of what you're thinking. Because let's face it, odds of you having to deal with the exact questions I'm asking you once you're in that council seat, at best, they're 50/50, right? So what people really want to hear is your thought process, right? People want to hear what you're thinking, how you're thinking about things. You know, the way this change is going to happen with climate action, it's decision by decision, right? And it's not just council decisions. It's the decisions that are made every day by staff, right? And the rest of the city that's doing the work. Jennifer, you know, having been on staff, you know what that means, right? You're the guys who are doing a bunch of the work, and, and council is there to help govern, but there's a lot going on there. And so how do you, as a council person, plan to influence and govern those daily decisions? Because it's drip by drip. We got a lot of things to get done. Every decision counts. And so that's what people want to hear about tonight. So you already got a peek at two questions via Berdeta. I'm going to skip back up to John and talk to you, John, and say, hey, how are you going to work with youth and students to ensure that they have affordable options to move around the city as they travel to school, their jobs, and other activities? And I know people are like, how is that a climate question? And the answer is, because we're talking about transit, and transit has a big role to play in reducing carbon emissions. So John, I give it over to you for that question.
Yeah, I'll take that question and basically run with it because I think if we're encouraging, you know, biking, bike lanes and biking to work and multimodal transportation, I mean, a lot of times, just getting on your two feet and walking down for lunch is a viable option. So making city, the city of Tempe a more walkable city, I think, would go a long way in reducing any type of admissions. But then also being very conscious with what we're doing when it comes to alternative modes of transportation. I mean, I don't think anyone here is going to say the internal combustion engine's going to go away in five years. We can talk decades that maybe that'll go away, and there'll be other options. But encouraging the use of light rail, encouraging the use of bus, encouraging the use of biking, walking, everything like that, especially for our youth. A lot of times, you know, the working, the high schoolers that are working, they might not even have access to a vehicle. Well, let's at least provide access to reliable bus transit that's going to come a little more often, if it makes sense, or extending the light rail as long as we're not using taxpayer dollars and we're using federal funds that are part of a bigger idea of addressing global change and ensuring that federal dollars are involved when it comes to that. So with the youth in general and just Tempe, I guess, as a whole, citizens, I think if we can be more conscious of how we're traveling and how we're getting from point A to B, that'll go a long way in addressing some of the climate change issues when it comes to transportation.
Great, thank you, John. And of course, you know, let's not forget streetcar. It's coming soon.
It's coming. Bring it to Tempe, South Tempe.
Harper, Harper, we're going to skip around. We're not going to go in the same order all the time. So jump in on this conversation, answer the question, add to the question, add your perspective.
Sure. So the question is, how, how are we going to engage the youth in transportation solutions which address climate change in the future?
Yeah, I mean, honestly, youth are asking for these, for these solutions and not feeling like they're being, their needs are being met, right? And they are the people who are coming, who are not residents, who actually learn or work in the area. Yeah.
Yeah, they are. One of the issues, I mean, if we're just looking at numbers, between 2010 and 2040, we're anticipating, what, 55,000 new residents in Tempe alone? So that's going to create some transportation infrastructure issues. I think encouraging cyclists, electronic vehicles, and safety for those vehicles is a big part of it. And that requires infrastructure spending. Because if someone's going to go out of their way to get an electronic vehicle to fight, fight climate change, you're talking about a $2,000 to $4,000 investment if it's just a cycle, right? Where are you going to store that? Where are you going to park that and feel safe in Tempe? Is there security around? I think addressing that is an infrastructure issue and making sure that we're planning now for what's happening, not just three to five years down the line, but for 10 years. Because we want to create a multimodal transportation haven for people of all ages, not just the youth. The streetcar is going to help with downtown Tempe. It's going to help alleviate some traffic hubs around the university itself. The light rail helps in assisting that, and those are both free for people under, underage, right? And then busing is the same, has relatively same impact. I would like to see additional transportation hubs. And by hubs, I mean energy storage and safe parking for electronic vehicles in the future, as well as cyclists now. I would like to see some education put in place for maybe some PSAs working with our local law enforcement, explaining the rules of the bike lanes. Because I've spoken with hundreds of residents who are cyclist enthusiasts who have been hit or almost hit multiple times because traffic isn't following the rule of law when it comes to bike lanes. Anything that we can do to encourage those safe transportation hubs, increase multimodal transportation that goes from north to south, as well as east and west in downtown, and really just encouraging the evolution of accepting that cycling and electronic vehicles are a way to curb or at least mitigate the effects of climate change. That's also going to require some infrastructure spending on canopies and some indigenous plant life to create shade. Anything that we can do to invigorate green streets. I know that's also in the city plan. That's what we're looking at. I'm behind all of those initiatives. So I would use and leverage my knowledge and subject matter knowledge and get the right people involved to speak with council so we can hopefully pass some ordinances that are already outlined in our, in our city plan.
Great, thank you, Harper. Arlene, I want to go to you next. You know, Harper really just covered a lot of ground, a lot of territory. You know, there are youth out there, and I hate using youth. You know, they're just young people. There are young people out there who really buy into and, and, you know, the notion that streets belong to people, not cars. They are behind movements like Vision Zero and Complete Streets. Talk a little bit more about this question that we're discussing right now, about how youth can get around better and how we can assure, ensure affordable options for them.
Absolutely. Thanks for the question, John. When I started volunteering in Tempe, I was a part of the Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission. So it's no surprise to me that the youth in Tempe have stepped up and offered their suggestions and have a strong opinion. We have a record of including them in decisions. So let me answer it two ways. You talked about, how do we think about this? So I'm trying to answer in, in that vein. The first is accessibility and usage, right? People won't change their habits unless it's convenient for them. So the, I like the transportation hub idea. We have Orbit, we'll have the streetcar, but connectivity to the other parts of transportation are key. And the accessibility, Berdeta talked about youth in Tempe have discounted passes. Well, you also mentioned, what about the students in Tempe that don't live in Tempe? Well, let's look for partnerships. Where are some partnerships from neighboring cities that can connect them to the transportation within? So access, usage. The other component on the, how would I think about this, is make it a part of the strategic plan. So whenever you see staff come to the table at a city council meeting, they always open with, well, this is our plan, and it, it addresses these performance measures. So they have to outline what the ultimate goal is and how are we measuring it. Include that in the strategic plan. Excuse me.
Yeah, great points. Now, Casey and Jennifer, I'm going to go Casey next, and then Jennifer. I'm mindful of the fact that you have to answer last. I'll make sure you move back to the first, the next question, all right? But Casey, if you can, and you're allowed to plus-one things, by the way. You don't have to make up stuff out of whole cloth, but we would love to hear your thoughts on this question as well.
And so I organize with young people. So I think the biggest thing is meeting young people where they are, having conversations with young people to engage them in the policies that impact their lives. We know that young people right now are asking for transportation equity and free and accessible transportation. Right now, you know, the orbit doesn't go south of baseline, and people are asking for it because a lot of students rely on the orbit to get to school. The neighborhood circulator might be easier for them than the city bus. We also need to increase frequency to increase ridership. Every, you know, the orbits come every 15 to 30 minutes. Valley Metro, every 30 to an hour on Sundays or holidays. So making it more accessible for folks, increasing the frequency so that our students can rely on it to get to school, to get to work, to get around. But we know that public transportation isn't the only transportation that youth and young people are using. People are biking. We need protected bike lanes. E-bikes are becoming increasingly more affordable. I'd argue that e-bikes are going to be more affordable for I'd argue that e-bikes are going to be more affordable for young people than EVs. And so young people are more likely to be on an electric bike to travel across the city. So having protected bike lanes so that we can keep our young people safe while they're biking is incredibly important. And then having, young people have asked for water options at transit centers and bus stops, and also asked for shade at bus stops. Right now, there are roughly five hundred unsheltered bus stops in Tempe. That's about half of the bus stops in Tempe. And the current budget only allows for ten bus stop shelters to be built each year. At that rate, we'll never meet it because we'll continue to add bus stops. And so increasing that budget is incredibly important to making, to minimizing health impacts and also increasing ridership. You know, meeting young people's requests that they have made to the sustainability office.
Great, thank you. You know, by the way, the thing I always get told, Jennifer, about young people, they're like, palm trees don't count as shade. We're like, yes, we know, we've got to work on that. I know my favorite mode of transportation down at ASU is a skateboard. So I know that's not what we're talking about, though. So tell us more about your thoughts on this question.
Skateboard with their earbuds in, right?
Thankfully, no for him, but yes, I hear you.
Okay, good. I've avoided a lot of those students. Anyway, great question, happy to answer it. For one thing, we need shade everywhere in Tempe. We had fifty-three days last year that it was over a hundred and ten degrees. So we, it's not practical to walk and ride bicycles without shade. So we are continuing to get more money into the trees. And we partnered with SRP before on getting trees planted. And as far as the bus stops, Councilmember QB and I are working very hard to increase that budget. And we can't wait, we can't wait another, like till 2025 to have the bus stops all up and running. So we need those bus stops. In fact, recently, one of my neighbors was sitting at a bus stop that did not have a shade cover or any protection and a car went through seven lanes of traffic and hit her at the bus stop and killed her. So that goes to my Vision Zero support. I am extremely committed to Vision Zero and slowing our traffic down. As I've canvassed throughout the whole city, it's been speeding cars everywhere. And it's just really disturbing to see how fast people are going. And we can do a lot of traffic calming, there's a lot of things to do to implement Vision Zero. Also, as far as the youth, I would like all youths, no matter where they live, to have transportation in throughout the valley. And so that's the kids that don't go to Tempe schools, they could still come in on buses. I also want to increase, I've been talking about this for a while now, our Orbit service into South Tempe. We have it everywhere. And I agree with Casey that we can really help the kids get to school on the Orbit bus. I'm supportive of the streetcar and the streetcar expansion into Mesa and making that connection so people don't have to drive into Tempe or into Mesa. They could take the streetcar. I'm supportive of more buses, more frequent buses, bicyclists, iBicycle throughout the city. It is scary out there and we need more protected lanes for the bicyclist. I could go on and on, but we have to have shade. It's my closing statement on this. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you for that sobering story. I do, we are sorry for your loss. That was a very sad way to end this portion of the discussion, but it's an important one to acknowledge. And honestly, people are not going to take alternate modes of transportation unless the environment allows them to. And that environment you are going to shape as a member of city council. So thank you all for the free answers to those questions. Jennifer, I'm going to come right back to you, but we're going to shift the lens. We're going to go to the business side of things. So now we're getting grown up. And I want to talk about, you know, trying to set a sense of urgency to work with businesses to see the opportunity and bold and immediate action on climate. And the question is this, how can Tempe work with businesses and developers? And I'm putting the emphasis on developers here, and you may not want, to invest in measures that will address extreme heat issues.
Absolutely. Thanks for the question. So the city of Tempe has a green business program. And so the businesses can get certified. And I know that we also have people that can go out to the businesses and help them with saving water, saving energy costs and partnering with them. So they don't have to do all the research and do all of it on their own. Also, we work closely with the Chamber of Commerce on green initiatives. We've also, with the development, the developers, for example, Carvana is coming in in the near future. We proved that. And they're going to have, the entire parking garage is already set up for EV. So right now, they're going to have ten EV charging stations in each garage. But eventually, as it progresses, that entire garage can be EV. And then also working buildings that are solar ready. So when solar is, maybe comes down a little bit in price, they're going to be able to put solar panels on the buildings and that saves energy, obviously, and costs for the businesses. So it's really a win-win for both the environment and for the businesses. It's the triple bottom line, right? People, planet and profit. And when we partner together, and the C, of course, is very committed to sustainable practices and supporting those businesses and learning from one another and making the environment in general much more sustainable. Thank you for the question.
Thank you, Jennifer. Casey, I'm going to come to you next. I put an emphasis on developers because sometimes it's the developers who say, man, doing that extra work to make things environmentally friendly means that my development doesn't pencil out. How do we deal with that? How do we work with businesses and developers to create a climate, a climate, that's probably the wrong word, create a situation to invest in measures that will address extreme heat?
As Arizonans, we don't just notice the high temperatures on the weather report. We feel physical impacts of extreme heat. We know the climate crisis is here and Arizona is facing record extreme heat. In 2020, we had the most days over one hundred, one oh five, one ten and one fifteen. And that's just a taste of what's to come. So extreme heat is personal to me. I live with chronic illnesses, including lupus and multiple rare genetic conditions. And the record heat waves deeply impact my health. Extreme heat can cause me to faint, experience physical pain. And sometimes I can't keep my food down. I'm not the only one. There are lots of people who live with chronic illness. Being a child under four or a senior over sixty-five, being pregnant, all increase your risk of heat-related illness. And some even die as a result of extreme heat. Last year, we saw record extreme heat-related deaths once again. And it's completely preventable. And we know that we need to work with the business community in order to address this. A 2020 study of Tempe using NASA earth observations and light detection and ranging showed that the hot, some of the hottest areas in Tempe are industrial parks. So businesses are part of, you know, the hottest areas of our city and they're going to be part of the solution. So the city can work with those existing businesses to adapt their, you know, current buildings, including cool roofs or reflective roofs that lower the temperature in the city. And then with new developers working on green building codes, including the International Green Building Standard and building codes that make developments EV-ready and solar-ready.
Casey, thank you and thank you for that very personal story. We appreciate you sharing that with us. Arlene, you are going to be up next. Same question, how do we do this? How do we get ourselves in a partnership with businesses as we address extreme heat?
I think you used a key word, partnerships. You build relationships, you communicate with your partners and you set expectations. You share the vision of what you want to build for our community. And you said it earlier, you said, we're transitioning here to grownups and focusing on grownups. Well, let's speak as grownups and share the vision. And that way, any potential partner comes to the table and you've managed their expectations, right? It's clear, it's straightforward. You have the discussion. But I think setting those expectations and building partnerships. We have, the city has great partnership with the Chamber of Commerce, which does have, and they've implemented their sustainability plan. And they help member businesses with a sustainability plan. We can do that. We have a fantastic team at the city when it comes to Dr. Braden K and his team that can weigh in on that conversation. But having all of the stakeholders at the same table to have those conversations in the planning and then the implementation is simply that, you create the plan together.
Yeah, great points. Thank you, Arlene. Appreciate that. Harper, you are up next. Extend this story, talk about your perspective. I mean, this is, this is not a made up question. This is for real, right? Businesses and developers have struggled to be part of the solution. And how would you approach this if you were on council?
Well, I think my experience working with community partnerships, I can kind of leverage that into this. But I think Arlene nailed it on the head there. It's about creating shared value partnerships with developers. Developers aren't evil entities that are just trying to pillage our land, right? But we have an advantage in that we have forty square miles and limited mixed-use land that we can actually develop. So any of those developments, we actually hold the cards for leverage on. They can go to other cities, but why? Because we're trying to build a partnership with businesses that want to invest not just in us for profit, but in us for generations to come, right? And part of that is building initiatives that we have, sustainability initiatives currently where businesses, developers get points for green energy building. We can talk about landscaping strategy to kind of minimize heat reflection and massing. Indigenous local plants, which we've covered, canopy shading, things like that. Solar energy initiatives, not only a part of the proposal, but built into it. Because we're asking developers not just to build something in our city, but to invest in our city. And that means investing in our infrastructure because we're both profiting that way. So that would be, yeah, solar panel initiatives, green windows. And having big businesses invest in trip reduction programs, right? Making sure that we promote that heavily to all businesses across the valley. Small, those aren't, individually, those are small, right? And it's kind of like the Sustainability Point program that we have with developers currently. Individually, they're small, but if you work together as a community, address those concerns before the development begins and say, this is the chart that we are going to go down. This is the path that we're creating together. We need you to buy in and invest in our city and not just now for your profit, but for our residents for the future. Because that's where the real value happens.
Harper, thank you. Appreciate that. By the way, I'm the only grownup grownups and I'm having a hard time being a grownup for this entire ninety minutes, but I'm going to do my best. John, it's to you. You have the, you know, you have the horrible distinction of going last on this one. So, but we'd love to hear your thoughts and we'd love to hear you add into this dialogue, please.
Yeah, I mean, speaking of grownups, I'll take it a step further. So I'm the only business owner of the group here. I'm the only member of the chamber as well. And I work closely with seniors and very vulnerable people, especially when it comes to the risk of heat stroke or death, heat-related deaths. And I see it all the time. I walk into a house and it's ninety degrees in there and they don't have any air conditioner, they might have a small fan going. And I'm like, hey, how come, you know, you're not running your AC? And like, well, it's too expensive, frankly. And, you know, last year they cut my power off. And it's heartbreaking to hear that. So being able to find a sustainable way to help the vulnerable people when it comes to heat-related deaths in our city, I think would go a long way. But to Arlene's point, it's about a partnership. It's about bringing all these stakeholders to the table. Let's get the developers in a room together. Let's get the energy companies in a room together. Let's get city planners, let's get sustainability experts together. Because for some projects, yeah, it might not pencil out if you're going to do solar and EV and all sorts of extravagant things on a building that's going to be an A-class building, bringing, you know, forty-five, fifty housing units. But what can we do as far as canopy, shade canopy, irrigation, water reclamation, things of that nature? So there are certain steps that if we get all these people in a room together and we say, hey, let's figure out a sustainable way to get this development done that's going to be very beneficial for everyone. I think that's the way to go about doing it. I don't think it's a hard hand approach and I don't think it's a mandate approach. But it's going to be something along those lines where the partnership is working together for everyone and making sure everyone is involved.
John, thank you. And you bring up great points and, you know, it is a partnership. I think the trick is the leadership part of that, right? There has to be a leadership aspect to it when you're serving on council. And so we're going to shift, we're going to stay in the business world, we're going to go from heat to water. Not too big of a leap, really, because they're very, very much, you know, related. The first person who gets the answer to this one is Arlene. Arlene, this is a big one for Arizona Florida. We've been protecting, we've been trying to protect water supplies for the future for a long, long time. And businesses play a key role in that, especially when it relates to water use and alternatively, water conservation. How would you further encourage businesses to conserve water and use it wisely? And please, remember, we're looking for that extended dialogue and your thought process behind this as much as the, you know, sort of the typical solutions that we've often thought of.
I think one of the first approaches is to help them. To, for instance, the downtown Tempe Authority has several businesses that are working with the DTA to decrease water use. So if it's working in Tempe, meaning if people are initiating that and are interested, let's expand that. How do we help small, medium and large businesses? What resources can we leverage and coordinate in partnership? The key and the theme I think tonight for a lot of these big issues is partnership. What I've learned about sustainable practices is it has to be economic, cultural, and there's a political element, right? So you have to have all three to make it workable. It has to be widely adopted and implemented. So really finding out what do businesses need, not simply saying, hey, you need to save water. You need to decrease the use of water isn't enough. So because there are different categories of businesses also. So while in downtown Tempe, there is a start, I would love to see that expand. And I think using some of the feedback and knowledge from the businesses that are participating, let's expand it.
Yeah, thank you for adding texture to what I think John started when he talked about partnership is this. You've got to look at all those aspects, economic, cultural and political, and they all weave in together. And that's where leadership comes from. Jennifer, you are next on this question. How do we look at water in Tempe? How would you further encourage businesses to conserve water and use it wisely?
Well, we had a pilot program for the residents where they went in and you could go out. It was a smart water program. And you could have people come from staff to your home. In fact, I even did it to see where you could save water. Because those people are experts on how to save water. And what I'd like to do is expand that program. Actually, I'd like to get that program up and running again and also expand it to our businesses. So we have Breann Fisher, who's heading up our climate action plan at the city of Tempe. She's managing it now, which I'm very excited. So she's going to work with Dr. Braden K as a partner with him. And I think that we can, we're getting more resources as city staff to help the businesses. Also, I did not mention local first in my prior answer regarding the businesses and them helping with plans. So local first would be a great help too with lowering water usage for our businesses. Of course, we can rainwater harvest. We can get everybody using lower toilet flushes. We have a really big problem with landscaping. Like there are some HOAs in the city of Tempe that insist that you have grass out in front and they're getting eight hundred dollar water bills because we have raised the water rates. And I think we need to like expand to really look at how we can get more zero landscaping and throughout both the businesses and the residents in Tempe.
Thank you, Jennifer Harper, you're next. Thank you.
I love this question. To me, it's insanity that we live in a valley desert and we have grass all over the place. So I would encourage zero-scaping. I have it in my yard, I have a teeny patch of grass in the back because I have two dogs. But I also do water harvesting. So I would encourage that across the valley with big businesses. I mean, the money that we can save just on common sense policies like low-flesh toilets, low-pressure fountains and water reclamation, using reclaimed water for industrial purposes, right? For industrial cooling and for landscaping. If we can switch to common sense policies like zero-scaping, acknowledging that we actually live in a desert and try to position our businesses to succeed where we are. And again, I do water harvesting, I've got a little community garden that waters everything that I have. Encouraging businesses to make those common policy, common sense policy decisions, that's where I would go.
So you were like me this summer and you just wanted at least one more barrel when all that.
Absolutely. And every time it rains, I've got. Absolutely. And every time it rains, I've got I've got three fifty gallon barrels, and that waters all my vegetation, but I have a lot of pretty flowering plants, and that.
I got you. Casey, speaking of somebody with pretty plants, you got them in the background. But let's let's make sure we focus on, make sure we're focusing on businesses here. And how are we going to encourage businesses to be better partners with us at the city on water?
Great. So the business community has come to the city, has come to the Sustainability Office through the listening, listening sessions with Local First, with the Chamber, with the business community. And they've asked for bread and butter sustainability policies. They want best management practices. So what can they do to enhance their or to lower their water use and enhance their building? And they're also looking for the city to offer water audits. As Arlene mentioned, downtown Tempe Authority and the eleven businesses that it shares a building with worked with their landlord, worked with the city to do a water audit. And so the landlord and the tenants were all able to save water. So it's just better, you know, it's it's cost effective, and you're saving water. So it just makes for better businesses. And they're also asking for grants and rebates, having low flow toilets, having, you know, lower water running sinks. They're looking for grants and rebates to retrofit buildings and then also for new developments. And so this is what the business community is asking for. The Local First has developed the Green Business Certification to help to further those, you know, give best practices to businesses so that they can implement them. And so I think it's incredibly important that we, you know, listen to the business community. We've heard this is what they want and deliver on those practices for them.
Yeah, I'll just go ahead and ring the bell again for Local First. Those guys are great. We're so glad to have them as a partner. John, I screwed up. You should not have been last again, but you were. I apologize. Talk to us from your business perspective, as a business owner, as a member of the chamber. How do we get this to work better?
I'll just get in wherever I fit in, John. Don't worry. Don't worry about it. I I'm gonna I'm gonna answer the question by first talking about the city of Gilbert. So Legacy Sports Complex, which is the huge sports complex out in Gilbert, they wanted to put grass on all their fields, and then they realized how expensive it was to water all that grass. And then they looked at the turf option. So just for a business like that, the price of water basically said, hey, that's not gonna make sense. We need to put turf out here. And that's what they ended up doing. I think on a more local level, the increased cost of water is naturally gonna get some of these HOAs or some of these larger complexes to say, hey, let's reevaluate, you know, how we're using water. Are we using it the right way? And and do things that way and that nature. And it's, at the end of the day, as a business owner, I'm always looking at my bottom line. What can I do to be more efficient, to create efficiencies, to increase my revenue and lower my operating costs? And we were just in a owner's forum meeting with the council and or with the the Chamber of Commerce, and one of the business owners goes, I didn't want to put LED lights in my building. I thought the lighting was different. I just didn't want to do it. But then I realized the incentives and the rebates I would get, plus the cost of lighting, it made complete sense to do that. So on Harper's point, I think there's certain common sense things that we can do as a business owner, as a private resident, whatever it is, that are gonna increase, or I should say, decrease our footprint and how much water we use, how much electricity we use, how much crude oil we're using. And I think it's little incentives like that, the rebate program, for instance, with the city. I didn't know about it until I was preparing for this for this meeting. You know, I can get rid of of grass in my house and and get a rebate on that. I can increase or get a rebate on toilets for low flow toilets, and stuff like that just makes sense. And I think if we do, if every one of us does our part, it'll go a long way in kind of addressing some of these issues.
Yeah, great answers. And and you know, there are those lingering things, too, like LEDs. Those are bad. But you know what? The technology has come so far. Now you've got the full spectrum of beautiful light. They're dimmable, yada, yada, yada. And it's it's it's, you know, we've all got to grow with the with the changes and the innovations as they go. So thank you for that, John. I really appreciate that. We are gonna shift to a big bucket now. We're gonna shift to climate justice. And so this is really about that category of of thinking about those who are going to be hit first and worst by each effect of climate change, whether it's all that rain we got this summer, which some of us love and others struggled with, or whether it's the extreme heat that many of you have mentioned and the number of heat deaths that we've had. You know, the list goes on and on, right? We are in a changing climate, and some are gonna be hit worst and first. So first up this time is Casey. How should the city confront this reality that extreme heat and other weather instances are going to have a larger effect on people of color and residents with low incomes? How does the city walk into that situation and make a difference starting now?
Thank you for this really important question. Extreme heat is a climate justice issue in Tempe. It's a racial equity issue. It's a social justice issue. A twenty twenty study of Tempe showed that some of the coolest areas are heavily canopyed areas in neighborhoods like University Park, but some of the warmest areas are neighborhoods near Escalante and, you know, experience hotter temperatures. When overlaid with census data, the data highlighted priority areas where BIPOC communities and low income communities are experiencing some of the highest temperatures in our city and a lack of shade infrastructure. And this lack of investment isn't an accident. The predominantly Mexican-American community that used to reside in the San Pablo Barrio was displaced when ASU utilized Ammonito Maine in order to purchase land and purchase their homes to put up dormitories and the stadium in the nineteen fifties. Many of the San Pablo residents moved to La Victoria Victory Acres, and that has not seen the same investment in shade and in trees to cool down the temperatures that, you know, the old San Pablo Barrio had or that the, you know, current ASU development is experiencing. And so over the last seventy years, this continues to remain a priority track to decrease extreme heat and increase shade. So we must invest in environmental justice communities to increase shade and walkability and decrease extreme heat and heat related illnesses and deaths. One issue that exists currently is the neighborhood grant program disproportionately leaves out neighborhoods that do not have neighborhood associations. And those are often exist in the priority tracks or low income areas or areas that have high percentage of BIPOC communities living in those neighborhoods. And so if those are how we're implementing trees and shade, then we're leaving out people who are most impacted. And so we need to look at how we are allocating resources to make sure that the people who are most impacted are receiving resources first.
Casey, thank you. John, Casey just came right out of the gate and opened up a whole lot of issues, right? And and they're all big ones. So build on that, and and let's continue to answer this question. How should the city confront this reality that climate is gonna affect some people worse than first?
I'll say this. I probably have ten percent of the knowledge that Casey has when it comes to this issue. But from my standpoint, being the layperson, when it comes to an issue like this, it's all about getting the right people, the right voices in the room, and making sure that the city's doing everything within its power to help these most, the most vulnerable people. I mean, I'm on the board of the Tempe Community Action Agency, and I see firsthand people that live on the street or dealing with homelessness. And for the longest time, I'm like, it's one ten. What is this guy doing? You know, he's walking from one park to another because he has to move along and stuff like this. Well, we were able to develop, along with some grants from the city, the Oasis, which is a place of refuge during the day with some of these people. They might have somewhere to stay at night, but they might not have shelter during the day when it is one hundred and ten out. And I think the city, from that standpoint, can increase what it's doing for the vulnerable population like that, whether it's homeless, whether it's people of low income who can't afford to run their air conditioner day and night, and they need a place to escape, especially young kids who aren't in school during the summer and need somewhere to go to escape that heat. But all in all, my goal, if I were to get elected, would be to bring all these stakeholders to the table, even the underrepresented, underrepresented people, whether that's outreach and having city employees and staff go out and meeting with these people and figuring out what can be done on a city level to help address some of these issues. And from that standpoint, again, I'm not the policy expert, but there's people that are a lot smarter that will be able to address these issues. I just want to be the one, the conduit, really, that gets everyone in that room together and gets the ball rolling.
Yeah, thank you, John. Appreciate that. Jennifer, John's bringing up homelessness, which is a which is a really big, big part of this equation, right?
Yes.
Homeless folks are 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 sheltering in the river bottom because it's cooler, or they're in Papago Park where it's slightly cooler, but that's not a solution. So talk about what the solutions could be.
Right. Well, I'm really proud to announce that we have Jenny's trailer that is coming up, I believe, in March, that will be open to various parks. So the trailer was, it was designed by engineering students at ASU. And ASU worked with Jenny Norton, who is a champion of sustainability issues and and just is a wonderful person, champion of a lot of different issues. I love Jenny. So anyway, so it's called Jenny's Trailer, and we're gonna have water there. It's gonna be air conditioned, and we're gonna use solar power to generate the 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 cooling and all that. So that's that's really cool. And and it'll have the Hope Team there, which the Hope Team reaches out to the homeless, right? So the homeless will be able to come there. They'll be able to get cooled off, and they'll be able to get services and and find out about, you know, what their needs are. We'll have the social social workers there, and they can evaluate the situations in a cool environment and get them hooked up with the with the needs, whatever they may be. So I'm really excited about that. I'm excited that ASU is partnering with us on this. And I just, we're also working, as I'm on the Sustainable and Livable Community, we're also working on having various cooling emergency hubs throughout the city so that if people do are having air conditioning problems, they'll be able to go to those hubs and have chilling chilling areas where they can chill out and read and whatever and get services. So we're working on on expanding that. So right now, the trailer is gonna go to the various parks and and just go around the city to the various parks. So really excited about that with Jenny's trailer. There was something also this. Go ahead. Go ahead.
That's great to hear. And and do me a favor. Will you get a community health worker or somebody from a community health clinic in that trailer as well? I'd really appreciate that, just for me.
Yes, the great, great idea. Appreciate that.
Hey, Arlene, you are up next. This is a, this is a really big topic, and there's lots to say about it.
Yeah. So climate justice, right? When I think of climate justice, my takeaway from it is that those that are committing the 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 least amount of damage are suffering the most from all of the damage. And that's, that speaks volumes about our vulnerable populations. That's who we need to take care of, and that's one of my core priorities. I served as the president of the Tempe Community Council Board, which helps distribute the funding for human services in Tempe. So I have a good understanding of our vulnerable populations in Tempe. We have to have an equity lens on everything we do in the city. And so your question is about leadership. In this leadership role on city council, how would I handle taking care of vulnerable populations when it comes to heat and heat mitigation? Certainly, it was mentioned a couple of times, but the resiliency hubs, the the temporary shelters, especially in our hot summer months, to help those that may not have the air conditioning to to escape the heat, that sort of thing. Very important, short term, great. We, the city has a goal of increasing our shade canopy up to twenty five percent. Well, let's make sure we look at neighborhoods that can't afford to plant those trees. Let's make it a priority that we invest in some trees and increase the shade canopy in those areas. Partnering, it it goes back to, again, the theme for tonight is partnerships, partnering with a lot of the local nonprofits, because they are boots on the ground, working with a lot of these populations. So what do they need? How do we help them? How how do we help with an organization like Neighbors Helping Neighbors that it may be a simple repair at a house to fix something? Let's look at creative ways to work together.
Thank you, Arlene. Harper, you're about to clean up on this one.
Oh, I'm going to. I want to first bring attention, Casey. That was a great answer. She brought attention to a indigenous Hispanic population that was displaced by a settlement of land. That's the epitome of climate justice, right, and what we're talking about today. You have areas in Tempe like Maple Ash Farmer Wilson, which gorgeous, but there's, it's not a heat. It's not a a heat jungle there because you have your public irrigation, right? And that services that community. So you have a canopy, a natural canopy of plant life that covers, which is why you have now currently a huge homeless population occupying that area and the soon to be developed Macon District because of that reason, because it's heat resilient and it's safer for homeless people to to encamp that. So what we're trying to address is how infrastructure is going to solve some of these problems. I like the shelter in place. I saw the design last week that Tempe released. That's great design, but it's not gonna help if you're stuck in the middle of the heat island. If you're in the middle of concrete and it's one hundred and ten degrees outside, that will bring it down to what, ninety two? That's great. Hopefully, we can mitigate loss of life, which is a huge goal. But infrastructure wise, we have to address this. And I've mentioned a handful of things like intelligent landscape design, using shade canopies of indigenous plants, creating more canopies between businesses, and trying to create corridors where people can actually walk when it is one hundred and ten degrees. If we're going to encourage transportation solutions for the future, we also need to address the human population that's walking those streets. Because I I have friends with a lot of cyclists and the cyclist community, and even when it's a hundred degrees, they're cycling because they're prepared. They're wearing the right gear to manage that heat. So we need to create a city which is more inviting for people to traverse without suffering. And that includes local populations that are vulnerable, that are gonna suffer the most from this, which is unhomed, homeless, and displaced. So I think that was a cyclical answer, right? But anything that we can do to encourage local businesses to form partnerships to address those issues, as well as in leadership positions in city councils, try to push for ordinances which expend taxpayer, uses taxpayer expenditure to address these problems because they benefit not just the vulnerable populations, but us as a whole.
Great, thank you. Don't bother turning off your mic because you're gonna get the next question.
Oh, I'm ready.
All right. And you you actually just invited it. So thank you for the segue. This is the fun part about being a council member is when you talk about vegetation on the side of a street. Do you know what a traffic engine here considers a tree on the side of the road?
Oh, probably anything above two feet.
No, 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 I'm sorry. They they.
Oh, is this a joke?
On the side of the road, a line of sight obstruction.
Sure.
So so now you've got a tree that you want upon the side of the street to provide shade and allow pedestrians and allow for good transit. But then you got people who are saying, wait a minute, that's something that a car can crash into or they can keep a car from seeing what's going on. How do we balance these two things and keep in, we're still in the category of climate justice?
Yeah.
How do we make this work, right? How do we fit the pieces together? I know Arlene said the theme is partnership, and I understand that. But but how do we, how do we do this? You know, if you're a council leader, how do you create those collaborations? And how do you get that evidence on the table and get the right discussion to happen, especially if those people aren't at the table?
Yeah, great question. First, I would partner with the Transit Authority and look at the designations and say, what is actually a line of sight issue for traffic? Because technically, an automobile can crash into anything. However, if that tree or canopy or shade providing whatever is creating a line of sight issue which will infringe on traffic, yeah, the first person that you're, the first authority that you go to is the Transit Authority to address that issue and set those parameters. From there, once you've set the parameters, you can dig a little deeper. So is it five feet from the curb? Is it ten feet from the sidewalk? It's usually, in most cases, about three to five feet pending root structure away from the bearing wall, right? So you want to get away from there, and you want to create a canopy. And the idea of canopy is not to shade the entire street. It's to, it's to shade the walkable areas in that street so we're not having heat islands. And the more that we can do that and create those partnerships, I mean, there there are local arborists that we can speak with and communicate with. There are botanists at ASU who we can involve in those conversations. And there's the Transit Authorities. Right there, there's three stakeholders that we can get together and start that conversation. It's already happening, actually, and it's part of the city plan. But the more that we align as council members, or what I would say I would do effectively in council, is align with those stakeholders and actually present data and say, we're looking at three feet from the wall. We're looking at trees that take about five years to grow. The cost of this is gonna be this, but it will provide this. It's, and that's what I say when I. It's, and that's what I say when I go on about, you know, how we need data-driven solutions to modern city challenges. That's what I'm talking about. It's actually using the evidence to align the right stakeholders and then present that to the jury, which is the residents and city council.
Great, thank you. And by the way, I have traffic engineers who hate me every time I bring up that, that line of sight obstruction thing. Because it's probably a 10-year-old anecdote. But you know, I, I literally was told that once in a meeting. It's like, it's a line of sight obstacle. We can't have that. I'm like, wow, okay. Arlene, this is on to you. Again, keeping that frame of climate justice, right? The loudest voices in the room are typically the ones who can afford to be in council chambers, as opposed to the people we're really talking about who are affected worse than first.
Right, right. And we have to make sure that, that remains a strategic priority, that we take care of our vulnerable populations as we're planning the bus stops, the bus shelters or the transit hubs. Are they accessible? Are they shaded? Are they protected? And my answer may bore you on this one, but it's again, bringing the right people to the table. So the traffic engineers in Tempe, when I was on council, we adopted Vision Zero for design and plan. We also hired an urban forester. So you, I'm not a tree expert, but there are tree experts, right? So given the puzzle, if you say, hey, here are the spots, we're looking for shade, we are looking for safety, of course, first and foremost, what do we need to do as a council member? That's my charge. And I think that's what's important, that we communicate, these are all priorities. So how do you combine them as you're making the plan?
Yeah, great, great answer. Thank you, John. This is on to you. I'm gonna, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna build off of Arlene. I'm not trying to rebut her in any way, but sometimes when you call on the expert, the expert says something like a tree is a line of sight obstacle. And that's the part where it gets really frustrating to me. So, you know, again, people who are going to get hurt first and worst, they need your voice.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take your line of sight anecdotes a little further. So I got a call from the city code enforcement office saying that my signs were in the line of sight. And I said, I said, could you explain that? They're a foot off the ground. Like, well, per city code, you know, they're in the line of sight, you need to move them back off the street. And I said, well, to be a law-abiding citizen, yeah, I'll move that. I don't agree with that city code. And it's the same thing with a tree or with a bush or something, some type of shade canopy structure. And I'm all for partnerships and getting people to the table and all that. That needs to be the first step, I think, in any decision that, that needs to be made when it comes to public safety. But then at the same time, you have to be willing as a city council member or as, you know, an expert witness or whatever it is to say, hey, I agree with what you're saying, but I think we're going to go in this direction. And making those hard decisions sometimes are what we're elected officials. That's what elected officials are for, to make those decisions. You can't please everyone. So if the loudest voice in the room or the, the most capital-backed voice in the room is the wrong one, sometimes you have to make that decision as a council member. And I think looking at it as a whole, we need to be objective and say, hey, what is best for the largest population of Tempe or what is best for the city moving forward? And I think getting everyone in the same room is that first step, but I think making a firm decision and going forward with it is the second part of that action.
Beautiful, thank you. Casey, you are up next. Let's keep our eyes on those people who are going to be affected first and worst. And how do we address these issues?
Thank you for the question. I think when addressing climate justice, we must, you know, apply an equity lens to every decision that we are given or, you know, every decision we need to make. When I look at Warner Road between Kyrene and Rural, it's tree-lined sidewalks the whole way. You know, it's beautiful, it's shaded, and that is some of the coolest area in Tempe. I don't think people are saying that's a line of sight issue. So I think that, you know, if someone's mentioning this to prevent communities of color, to prevent low-income communities from having the same amenities that we've already put in wealthier areas of the city who get to experience the benefits of those trees, then it's up to the city council to stand up for it and say, look, how are we going to make this work? Because we need to cool down these areas. We need to make sure that people who are, you know, near the SRP plant and there are no trees are able to walk and to live, you know, a healthy life. And so I think it's, you know, how do we stand up for the right thing? And the right thing is fighting for environmental justice and communities to be invested in and continuing that investment so that priority tracks have lower temperature and have better health outcomes.
Great, thank you, Casey. Appreciate that. Jennifer, our worst and first, our first and worst population is waiting for our answer.
Well, I, I'm really proud of what the city is doing now. Of course, the most important component is safety. But that is really easily done. I mean, trees can be planted almost everywhere and it's still safe. You just have to have the right, the right trees, right? You can't have like evergreens on the corners. Those, you have to have the right trees. And, and the city is, is doing that now. We had a financial crisis, 2008 and 2009, and we got behind on our landscaping. And now we're catching up and I've been proud to support that. We also have Rick, Richard Atkins is, he is our arborist at the city of Tempe. We hired him a while ago and he's doing a great job. So he's working with those engineers and, and, and expanding his knowledge, training them on what, what can be, you know, planted where and what the best trees are. I know what Casey's referring to on the Warner and the Kyrene, that area, where we're putting all those bushes and, and the trees. And I'd like that expanded to the entire city. And I think we're doing that. We have put money into doing it all over. I mean, trees are the answer, but it has to be in every section of town. It can't just be in certain areas. So that's, that's really important to me. Also, the vision rating system I talked about that I'm certified in, it, it speaks to the engineers and how to enter, and engineer sustainable practices and including infrastructure. So the trees and the corners and the, and the traffic, all of that all come together. Also, you know, we have a very, we have very progressive staff as far as sustainability measures and they work with one another. We, you know, have the, the physician now with Dr. Braden Kay, who oversees all of that. And we, social equity is so important to this. So we have to, we have to take that into mind in all areas of the city, no matter what. They need to have trees. They need to have functional transportation. We also have a, if someone has a problem with air conditioning, we have a social equity program that they, with the city will pay for their, a new air conditioning unit. So, because those are like $9,000. So that's, that's super important. So we're doing a lot as a city already. And, and, but we're going to continue to do more. We're not going to stop. But I'm very proud of what we've accomplished so far. So thank you very much for the question.
Well, don't go anywhere, Jennifer, because you're going to be the first one to answer the last question.
Okay, I love it.
We're going to make this work here. We might, we might run a little bit long. I hope people can, can hang on just a little bit. The question is a big one. It's a capstone question. I had previously asked Burdatta two questions about youth. I'm gonna turn into this one, so everybody has a chance to address it.
Okay.
Talk broad scale about the ideas you have about how we can create the clean energy future. And that can include that question that I gave to Burdatta about how can youth play a role in creating clean energy jobs in the future? All right. And you're up first. And if you could, I know it's a big question, but if we can keep it around two minutes, then we can get to everybody.
Okay. Could you just repeat the question one more time?
Sure. What ideas do you have about creating a clean energy future for Tempe? And also, how can youth play a role, including creating clean energy jobs? Boy, I just can't say that, sorry.
It's okay, okay. Well, for one thing, there's the Cool Kids Program, which John, I think you know a little bit about. And that's, that's happening with, we have two youth councils at two schools, Escalante and Gillon. And they are helping their neighborhoods reach out and promote sustainable practices. And they help with food and greater access to food, because obviously that's so important for our children to learn and our people to survive. So that's, that's something that is happening with youth. Also, you know, making it so the youth have free transportation, as we talked about, to getting around the city. And, and the passes, I talked earlier about having more passes. Streetcar expansion will help with, with our youth to be able to get along. And of course bicycle and, and the orbit. And, you know, for clean energy jobs, you know, the more we develop sustainable practices and the better they will be and the more cost-effective it will be. Like when I first was facilities manager and LED lights came out, it was very expensive to have them. But we waited a little while for the price to come down. And then it made sense. So it was a great return on investment. Those kinds of things can ha- happen with businesses and new jobs for the youth. And, you know, our culture is going to completely change and the youth get it. They, they, they get what's, what's happening. And, and they're amazing with, with their putting together and the robotics and all of that. And so I just think that I have a lot of faith in our youth, in our, in our city. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. John, I made it all this way, but I'm going to use a football thing anyway. You're on a two-minute drill right now to answer this question, right?
Oh, no time, no time out either.
How are we going to address energy future for Tempe and particularly clean energy jobs for our youth?
Yeah, I'm going to answer the second part of that question first. So listening to NPR this morning, they were talking about reteaching these plant operators at coal power plants, you know, to work nuclear, to work solar, how to install solar, stuff like that. We're at a precipice right now where we can educate the next workforce in clean energy. We can have clean energy engineers coming through Tempe schools, through Kyrene schools, to ASU and their sustainability program. So I think we're right on that cusp where the future of energy is going to come through our youth and the education that we instill on them over the next several decades, really. And then to the first part of that question, I think the city is doing a great job right now in what it can do. I think globally, clean energy needs to be addressed. I think there's, there's some strides that we can take as a city, as an individual, as a business owner to change that. And I think going back to what Harper said, common sense changes, I think, will go a long way on a city level and on a local level.
Thank you, sir. And Casey, you're going to be next. I'm just going to double up on that shout out to ASU though. I, I actually work for a national organization in my day job. And there are people all over the country that are looking to ASU for its expertise on climate. So make use of that for sure. Casey, you're up next. Two minutes.
Yeah, I definitely understand the want to work in a green job. I went to law school so that I could work in sustainability. I studied environmental law and sustainability while at Sandra Day O'Connor and now work at a trucking company that's developing electric semi-trucks. So when I hear climate, I think jobs. And that's why I fought hard as a community organizer for a civilian climate corps program. And I think that that's something that can be implemented more at a local level. Tempe is looking at adding resilient energy hubs and so providing people to provide the workshops, people to build, you know, the solar on the resilient energy hubs, people to man the community garden, people delivering, you know, emergency items to folks. Those are jobs in climate, in resiliency. Right now, the sustainability office is asking for $30,000 a year for green stormwater infrastructure, building green stormwater infrastructure, creating by, you know, planters that divert water to then what feed a bio swale, water a tree, the tree, you know, shades a bus stop, like that's a job. And then if we have green building codes that get us to being solar-ready, even if solar is not in the initial part of the project, it means that that green job of installing solar can happen later. So I think there's a lot we can do. We just need to invest in the Climate Action Plan, fully fund it and adopt green building codes.
Great, thank you. Harper, you're up next.
Great. Like I said earlier, I was really excited about this conversation for a number of reasons. One, it deals with future planning and two, it's the city that I grew up in, that I, that I love and live in. Historically speaking, we, we've done a lot of things, but we're at a fantastic position right now to really invest in the future. And that's what we should be doing. And we're not just talking about transportation and renewable energy. We're talking about building coalitions and alliances with businesses and developers who are going to work and live and grow here with that infrastructure in mind. So we're talking about common sense stuff, like, like I've mentioned, green canopies, green streets, green planting initiative or building initiatives. But the way that we're going to really go into the future requires youth involvement. And that's programs that we have like Eric, which is the Education Recycling Information Center, working with local businesses on sustainability, environmental, basically steering or facilitating a partnership with the youth into STEM programs, which will hopefully have a beneficial transference for decades to come. And that requires city involvement. That requires initiative from stakeholders and city council. That requires initiative from business stakeholders in our community that serve Tempe. And that requires partnerships with educational institutions as well. My background is all about community partnerships. It's all about youth and advocacy. So I think I'm, I'm qualified to, to steer that conversation, database, using the city plan that we already have, using the CAP, which I've read and it's full, and implementing these things. And we, we are making strides, but I think we need some clear leadership in city council that's actually going to invest in these proposals. And as a, as an advocate for these proposals, I, I will do that.
Thank you, Harper. Appreciate that. Arlene, you get to clean up.
Thank you. A great question. And I heard two parts of it. What would we do to support? Okay. And then the youth component. First of all, the Climate Action Plan. I'm anxious to see the updated version. Support it, implement it and keep going back to it. It provides a great framework for the city and, and we need to use it, right? Follow it. We have a team of subject matter experts in that area in-house. Keep consulting. And it is just steps away from City Hall is Arizona State University with the first school of sustainability in the country, if not the world. And, and they've grown. And sustainability is not an issue that exists simply in that one area, but it is, you see the influence across the academic, the academic community. There are engineers working on alternative energy resources. They're inventing biofuel from algae. You know, how do we, how do we incorporate, again, my favorite word tonight, the partnerships and leverage those? As far as youth, the youth are interested that the, this is a, this is a topic that is close to their heart. What we need to do is keep involving them, the different youth councils, whether it's the ones that are existing in schools, tied to the Sustainability Department at the city of Tempe and incorporating, incorporating the Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission. Keep them involved. Remember, I was on Mayor's Youth Advisory and now I'm running for city council. So there could be a correlation in career pathway there. But it's also that pathways. Recently, one of the Innovation Fellows, an ASU undergrad, and, and he served an internship in the Sustainability Office in Tempe. He's an engineering student. I know.
I'm going to, I'm going to pause you. I apologize because of timing. We're fair to everybody. I gave everybody two minutes. So, thank you very much for your answer. Thank you all tonight for everything that you brought to this conversation. I think we got what we wanted. We got the chance to have a bigger dialogue. We heard some incredibly unique perspectives. We heard your voices. We saw the engagement. We got your energy and your heart. No matter what happens in this election, I hope you'll all stay at the table and working for climate action in Tempe. And we all wish you the best in the election. Lori, I'm going to turn it back to you. And thank you all so much for this conversation. It has been a wonderful event. Thank you. Lori?
Yeah, no, as John said, thank you all for going deeper and really getting into these issues. We, we greatly appreciate that. I don't live in Tempe, but if I did, I would vote for all of you. And a big round of applause for John Ford, who always does a great job in moderating. So thank you all. And we look forward to working with you in the future.
Thanks so much. Have a great evening.